Great idea.
And they're also going to have a parade, and I know he mentioned that.
Yeah.
Probably single file.
Looks like ACTN TV just got in.
Okay. All right, so the board is now in open session. And if there are citizens who would like to open up. David?
There is no one with their hand raised.
Okay, so we'll go to the town manager, John Mancheretti.
Yes, thank you. Let me just have to grab my update here. Excuse for a second, sorry. So, just checking in through this COVID-19 pandemic, we've really been working every week on new initiatives to try to help people, a lot of great discussion that you're meeting last week, which we've been doing a lot of work to follow up on. The governor did it today, did announce that the Stay-at-Home Advisory, the non-intentional disclosure, and the ban on gatherings of more than 10 people will all be in place through May 18th. It was supposed to be through May 4th, and it's been extended for two weeks. My understanding is that they are going to work with stakeholders across the state over the next two and a half weeks to identify ways that we could potentially start phasing things in. Or maybe they will just extend it more, more time over the next few weeks. So it's just more of a wait and see and watching and with all the public health experts weighing in. So we're watching that very closely. And I've actually been very involved with people across the state through the MMA. And so we're doing the best we can to help communicate to the state some of the concerns we have locally about what reopening may look like someday and how we would, what challenges we see facing as that happens. Other news, ACTN Boxborough United Way has been doing a great job with their COVID-19 emergency fund. And they've put up frequently asked questions on their website for people to have a better understanding of how they can access these grants. Laura Ducharme has been the point of contact here in ACTN for residents who are interested. And she's processed quite a few applications over the last few weeks. So we really appreciate the United Way and the work that they're doing to help our community and Boxborough, our communities as well. The Board of Health last night approved the proposal that this board discussed last week with regards to selling, having restaurants sell some of their supplies and serve as a grocery store during this emergency period. So we have a motion for your review and approval tonight, which we put that into place as soon as tomorrow. We are all still looking at the several of the ideas that we talked about last week. One of them was on signs. We talked about maybe we could relax our enforcement of certain sign bylaws or potentially waive fees for temporary signs. So that involves us working with the zoning enforcement officer and town council to just find out exactly what we need to do. So that is still underway. We'll continue to keep you apprised of that. We're also, we've launched the hotline. It hasn't been been very busy, but we have people ready and available if there's questions. One thing is that many of our town offices don't have staff answering the phone like they would normally. So if anybody can't get in touch with someone at town hall and they don't have, they don't feel comfortable writing an email, which is what a lot of offices are suggesting, this is a great number to call that you can reach anybody. The number is 978-929-6619. And we're, we're calling it our COVID hotline, but it's really a customer service hotline for, for town business during business hours. We had Arbor Day celebration last week. Ryan Hunt, our tree warden, planted a tree in front of the West Acton Citizens Library. We were, you know, the board, you, you had a proclamation about being a Tree City USA and about celebrating this day, but because of social distancing, we weren't able to hold the event, but he held it. Actually, his family joined him and they planted a magnolia tree in front of the West Acton Citizens Library, and hopefully we can do something a little bigger next year. A great job by Ryan to get that taken care of. The town clerk has been communicating with other town clerks across the Commonwealth and working with her team. And, and, and she's brought forward a few suggestions for the board to consider with regards to the polling places. And the primary goals here are to try to limit the poll workers and their interaction and the number of poll workers we need to have spread out and working. So some of the ideas that she's brought forward are to change the polling locations rather than having them spread out, have everybody vote at the junior high. And that was a suggestion for the June 2nd election, but also a suggestion for the upcoming state primary and presidential election later this fall. So I wanted to bring that to your attention tonight and give you an opportunity to understand what's being proposed and ask any questions. And then we can bring back more information or details or answer any questions that you have. Some of the, some of the justification for is that, and she'd also look to have the voting window shorter so that she can run two shifts of poll workers instead of three. And have less time, less interchanging of equipment and sharing of equipment between voter, voter polling staff. So something that we'll, we'll continue to talk about. And if the board decides to do that, we probably have to do it at the next meeting if it's for the June 2nd one.
John, I read her memo and I've worked in the polls for a number of years. And the close contact is when they check in. And I know at the grocery stores now, they have that plastic screen between you and the cashier. And I didn't know whether we could figure out how to do that for the precincts because people lean in when you're looking up their name and number on the book.
Yeah.
You know, and they want to point where you're putting your finger to find their name. Oh, here it is, there it is. And so if there could be something that would prevent that.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's a great suggestion. The, and I think we'll, we'll probably be implementing several measures like that to make it safer for everybody, including, you know, spreading the people out further than they would normally be spread out and things like that.
Yeah.
I think the primary ask that, that the town clerk has is, is the changing of the polling locations, which, which we have to publicly publicize pretty heavily.
Yeah. Peter, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I, I know towns are shortening the time for the voting. The state law only requires four hours, that the polls be open a minimum of four hours. So I think that applies to both the state elections and the town elections. So I would recommend that we do that. I've had towns mandate that all public who access public buildings wear masks. I think that's a good idea. And yeah, a lot of towns are taking these protocols, providing the plastic shields, making sure that, you know, that the voting booths are disinfected periodically and those kinds of things. So whatever we can do to protect both the town employees and the poll workers, I'm in favor.
So, so yeah, I was, I should have been more specific about her ask. It was to actually shorten the voting window on the day of the election from, I think it's usually eight to eight. And she's proposing to do noon to eight. So it would be hours of voting.
Yeah.
So those are the two items, the changing of the locations and then the closing and the shortening of the voting window for the day. And then as part of that, it would be a heavy push to help people understand that mail-in voting is a much easier option.
Do you know, do you know where, where she's suggesting? We used to vote at Egot Park, I think, the clubhouse up there or something used to be.
She's suggesting that everyone voted at the junior high.
It just makes setting up much easier if there's only one location.
Yeah, I thought that she was doing the opposite, spread them out. Okay.
No, no, she wants everybody in the same place because of moving in and moving out. It's a big job. So do you want a vote from us, John, or just some direction?
Well, I think a vote would be helpful. I can run through, yeah, I think we can have that conversation now. I think I even saw Eva on the guest list. She wanted to get any comment from her. Looks like David.
David?
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm completely fine with Eva's recommendations for the June 2nd election. I would like to reserve judgment for November, however, at, at this time. You know, because I think there may be other things, you know, we don't know the whole, the whole structure of everything. The legislature may change the rules before November, or even the, the Congress may change the rules before November. Also, when it comes to November, I know some towns even for local elections have mailed the application for an early voting ballot to be mailed to them to every registered voter, just a letter, you know, a 50 cent letter. And I think we should consider doing that for the November election. You know, to, to promote, you know, a very high percentage of mail-in voting. So I mean, we could do it for this election too, but I think this, the timeframes are very short.
Okay. Is, is there a motion that the polls be open from noon to eight for the June 2nd meeting?
And, but, and a friendly amendment that all the voting takes place at our, all, all six precincts voted R.J. Gray.
Yes. Is that the junior high?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
We're in open session. I don't think we need to do that, do we?
No, we need to do it on all remote meetings.
All right, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah.
Hey. Mr. Berry?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Benson?
Hi.
Ms. Gardner?
Hi.
Ms. Trotter?
Hi.
Unanimous.
Okay, that's good.
Great. Well, thank you. That was very, very helpful and we'll, we'll start working on publicizing that information. We, as I mentioned last week, we're putting out a municipal monthly, May 1st, and we're going to feature some very important notices like this, and we're actually going to mail it to every household. So we can, we can certainly reach a lot of people with this information. But I'm going to push out hopefully by the end of the week and get to people's mailboxes early next week.
Okay. Is there anything else, John?
Yeah, just a few other things. During all this, there's still town projects that we're trying to continue to move forward. One of those is the Great Roads, the Great Road Sidewalk. There's a stretch from the, the fields to the the overpass for the Freeman Trail that we are putting a sidewalk in, and we were going to do that this, later this summer. But due to some changing, changes in contractor schedules and availability, we're able to start that right away.
Oh, great.
We're going to, we're going to work with the police on the, on the details, for police details. And we'll hopefully get going early in May on that. And then any additional funding that we get at town meeting this year, we would use on the next highest priority sidewalk, which is, which is great news.
Good. That's been a long time coming.
Yes. And so, and then Asa Parlin, I think I mentioned this, but just to reiterate, we, we, we went up to bid for the selective demolition. We got a pretty good contractor and we're ready, and they're ready and waiting for the green light. We're interpreting the construction ban to apply to that project. So that's why it hasn't started. And the same is in place for the Miracle Fields Project, Narrow Park. We're reconstructing those two houses that have been there for a few years.
Right.
One will be an ADA accessible family bathroom for Miracle Fields. And the other one will be a concession stand and other functions for the recreation facility. We have enough funding to do the entire bathroom building project. And we had requested funding from CPC to do the second one. It was only partially funded. So we had, if, if it's approved by town meeting, the CPC recommendation of 200,000 would be used to do some of the work in the second building. And then we'll just continue to figure out ways to do the rest of it at some point in the future. But it's good news that we get a pretty good bid and a decent contractor that I think is going to do a good job once we give them the green light. And just a few other things. We have a couple of requests for meetings. Recreation Commission, 53 River Street. And I believe VCC, if that wasn't already handled.
We've got Land Stewardship, Council on Aging, and Conservation Commission.
And so there's a full docket. So in, in the memo that I sent you, which is in the packet also, is a calendar showing April, which is, is pretty much over in terms of scheduling meetings. And then we have May, June, and July, and it's starting to get pretty booked up. I think we appreciate the board's support in, in having us only have one new meeting a day.
Oh, yeah.
Start up multiple committees. But once committees get, get going and get acclimated and have their startup meeting, we hope to be able to add multiple in the same days, but we're not there yet.
So do we need to vote on these committee meetings?
Uh, yes.
We have in the past, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Okay, we get the list again? I mean, there's some listed in the agenda.
Wait a minute. Peter, go ahead.
I was just going to ask for the list so we can put the vote together. There was some listed in the agenda, but John mentioned a few more. Let me just ask John, the HDC was meeting to consider the 53 River Street demolition of the concrete block building. That's contingent on a couple of things. The funding at town meeting for CPC money. And I think Selby has put it out to bid and got, got a bidding award, a contract. Do you know where that's at? And can we go forward with that without the CPC money and considering the construction brand ban if the HDC approves it?
I think so. I think, I think we're going to, we're going to look closely at that. That is, that's work related to a an urgent repair to a water, you know, dam that's been addressed. So I think it may fall under a different category than Asa Parlin for that reason.
Okay. And we, and we had some money from the state under grant we might be able to use to, until the CPC money comes through. So I would certainly recommend that we authorize the HDC to go ahead and meet in 53 River as well.
And the Land Stewardship Committee, the Council on Aging Board, and the Conservation Commission.
And Recreation.
And Recreation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Berry?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Benson?
Hi.
Ms. Gardner?
Hi.
Mr. Trotter?
Hi.
Unanimous.
Okay. Thank you all.
And then Joan, under, also under housekeeping, the, just to, I think you all would have received an email today from, from Christian Gachard, which was a response to the comments that several of us made at last week's joint meeting of the Planning Board and, and our, and our board on the HPP presentation that the period for public, public comments has been extended through the evening of Monday, May 4th. And next Monday, there will be a further joint meeting of both boards to, a virtual meeting to accept virtual verbal public, public comments on the, on the draft HPP. And then on Wednesday, May 6th, the revised draft will be available to all of us in the public. And then the following Tuesday night, there would be a, a further hearing where the consultants will go over each and every comment and explain how each of those comments was handled within the report. At that point, we would, it would be at our discretion whether we want to take further verbal public comments. If we should, we may then wish to defer a week to have those comments incorporated into a final or further draft or final draft of the document. Or if everything we heard is sufficient, we may vote along with the Planning Board on the HPP, on the, at the, at the joint meeting on the 12th. Or as I said, we would have another week if we chose to take further comments to be included. And then that would still give them until the 20th to submit the, the document to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And that meets the timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
I had one other issue on board appointments. We got an email from the ACHC about, or Lisa sent through the application of Janet Adachi to be on the ACHC. Nancy Tavernier emailed us saying they needed, we needed to get that slot filled quickly. John contributed to that. I'm the liaison to the volunteer coordinating committee. I called Greg Hutchins, the chair, today, left the message that I thought we ought to just appoint her. I don't think she needs to go through the VCC. I mean, they have to ask for people who have known, you know, are well enough known, skip that process. So I think we could just appoint her.
Yeah, yeah. Greg told me in communication over the weekend that for someone in Janet's, given her town service, that, that they typically waive the, the hearing, the interview before the VCC. So I would support Peter moving forward.
David?
But that probably needs to be a real agenda item, so we can put it on the agenda for Monday. It can be a consent item, but I don't think we can just vote on it without it being an agenda item.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
That's fair.
All right. So now discussion of the farmer's market. According to the packet, they've moved from Pearl Street to Elm Street? David?
Yeah, yeah. So the, the farmer's market folks have worked with Selby and others in the, in the town to come up with this alternate plan on Elm Street around the tennis courts. The Board of Health considered it yesterday and was generally in, in favor. They had some stipulations, which I think are, some of which are implied and or some of which are explicitly part of the plan, some of which might need a little bit of work. So for example, the, the, the Board of Health said that everybody would need face coverings. That's already addressed in the, in the plan. They said that they should have the same general health standards as grocery stores. And Cheryl Ball was in agreement with that. And then we will need a, some kind of plan for a parking plan and, and crowd control plan. That, that would have to, have to still be done. I will say that this, the arrangement of things around the tennis courts satisfies my concerns. There was about 15 feet in front of the booths on Pearl Street. And Pearl Street didn't lend itself to one-way traffic since people start at one side and have to return to that side. And so you, you basically had seven and a half feet or so per lane, if you will. Whereas around the, the tennis courts, there's a minimum of 25 feet in front of the booths. And it does lend itself to one-way traffic. So there's a minimum of 25 feet per, per lane. And the, 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 the full details of the, the plan from the farmer's market folks have several hand washing stations and, and other things. You can read the whole, whole thing. But anyway, I, I, that, the new plan satisfies my concerns about using Pearl Street.
But we're not going to use Pearl Street. We're going to use.
Right. So in the last meeting, I, I expressed concerns about using Pearl Street. And this plan satisfies all my concerns. So I, I'm, I like this plan.
All right. So is there a motion to support the farmer's market at Elm Street?
Can we just ask John Mancheretti if he has any concerns from the town's point of view?
No, I think, given the, the issues that we've been discussing and handling with regards to public health, I think this is the, a good location. And so we'll, we'll work to facilitate its use. I did check in with the school, the school district, because I know that there's a big construction project going on, on the other side of the field, just to make sure that it wasn't going to be impacting the farmer's market. And they said it would not, so.
Good.
I had a question about parking. There's, there's kind of a note here on the memo from Cheryl, and I don't really understand it. I don't see anything about parking in the protocols. Would it just be parking along Elm Street? And cars would park one behind the other? Or what's, what's the plan for parking?
As far as I know, there is no explicit plan yet for parking. I think that's something that the farmer's market folks need to work with the town. I was assuming on-street parking, you know, one side on, on Elm Street, but I, I don't think that's been firmed up yet. Missy has raised her hand and she's with the farmer's market. I can allow her to speak if she has an answer. Joan, do you want to allow her to speak?
Sure.
Missy, you're on.
Hello, everyone. Good, good evening. Thanks for having us and working on this with us. I just wanted to say that the Massachusetts Commissioner of Public Health put out an order as of yesterday that gave guidelines for operation of farmer's markets, farm stands, and CSAs as an essential service. So we edited our protocols to reflect all of those elements today. And so far, we have not added anything regarding parking to the plan. But our general idea was parking on Elm Street, as you have mentioned.
Is that okay with you, Peter?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't understand the Board of Health. It says, I mean, you might want to check with them, John. The Board of Health asked the Board of Selectmen, consider parking and potential closure of the tennis courts on Sundays during the hours of operation.
So, so I, I can explain those things. They, the Board of Health had three logistics concerns that we might want to consider in our decision. One was how parking can be managed. I think that can be worked out between the farmer's market and, and town and the town staff. The, 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 the second was that, that if by the summer, the tennis courts are allowed to be used, they would have to be closed for three or four hours, you know, counting setup on, on Sundays. So they'd be unavailable for certain, certain hours. So, but I, I think that's the, my feeling is that's just the nature of this, this decision. If the, you know, tennis is available, it'll be available at other times. And, you know, we, you know, we'd rather have the, the farmer's market be on Pearl Street, but that's not workable this year. So I think that's just a conflict that we have to accept.
Dean?
Yeah, a couple of things on Elm Street, and certainly the, the manager can look into this, or he's probably aware of it. I believe that the tennis court side of Elm Street is marked for no parking. So there would have to be a, an exemption for that. Also, there, I believe there's still a consent decree or as a result of a legal challenge on some of the uses of the field as how, as far as how it might impact the neighbors. So you might want to investigate it. I think all of these things are easy to resolve, but we might end up having, the selectman might have to take the action of suspending the, the no parking signage over there.
Okay. Anyone else? So.
What are we being asked to do to, to vote on this tonight?
To approve the farmer's market on Elm Street.
This would allow the use of the, this area around the tennis courts for the farmer's market on Sundays during the summer. Not, 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 not subject to anything, but the, the town staff would work with the farmer's market to work out the details. We, we're just allowing it.
Well, I would say it should be, it should be in accordance with the protocol. Well, I would say it should be, it should be in accordance with the protocols that the, the market has outlined to us in the Board of Health from their leadership board. They gave us a proposal for safety protocols for conduct to the farmer's market. So I think we ought to make the vote contingent on, on ensuring that they comply with those protocols.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, just one question. And this would start on, on July 12th, Sunday, July 12th. And it's, it's open from what? It's 10 to 12 each of those Sundays is? Is that it?
Yes, which is one hour less than what it was last year.
Okay, motion made. And John?
I'll second it.
And seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Ms. Gardner.
Aye.
Mr. Trotter.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right. Very nice. Good work, everybody. And the emergency order on selling groceries at restaurants.
Yes, so the, after you discussed this last week, we work with town council to come up with language and a way for it to be implemented. And the language was brought to the Board of Health last night. They had a discussion and awfully approved it. And it's, it's set up to be co-signed by the Board of Selectmen. So it's before you tonight for your consideration.
Okay, discussion?
How do you define grocery items? I thought about that. People have asked that. Is it stuff that restaurants typically have to prepare food or? Or exactly what do they have in mind?
I, I think generally it, it's, it's products that these purveyors are, are purchasing for their business that they may not be able to be using as much, but they want to keep their vendor relationships. Or maybe it's things that they can fill in a niche that with, with, through their vendors that they use for their restaurant to provide grocery service to the community. It's, it's a temporary order where, where, the way it's written, it's, it's, we will not enforce the zoning requirements that prohibit the sale of grocery items. So it's, it's not.
So it can be whatever they, in, in addition to the products that they carry to prepare their food, they could supplement that with other choices of groceries.
Yes, if they.
Would that be the idea?
Yes, I mean, if they have produce that they want to make available. For example, they would have to follow Health Division regulations for, for selling those types of, it's an option that they have at their disposal now. It's just another tool in the toolkit for, for these businesses.
Yeah, I, I, I reached out over the weekend to Rich Napoli of Idlewild Farms. And whether he had any, he had any issues with that. And he wrote a very kind note back thanking us for our support during these difficult times. And we are extremely fortunate to continue doing business and keeping our staff employed in this terrific community. Then he went on, he said, I am fine with my fellow small business folks doing whatever they can to survive, especially after so many did not receive any part of the PPP designated funds for small businesses. Hopefully they will be able to reopen sooner than later and begin on the road to recovery. Really nice note. Class gone.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the groceries?
Do we have to take a vote here?
Yes. Is there a motion?
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead, David.
I was just going to move that we not enforce the restrictions on restaurants selling groceries during the emergency.
All right.
Wait a minute, John, non-terney?
It would be helpful if, if you referred to the order that's before you and, and whether you authorized the chair to sign it on the board's behalf. I mean, we could change the, the order.
No, no, you're, you're, you're right.
That's what I was going to say. The Board of Health has already signed it, haven't they?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move, I'll move we authorize the chair to sign the, the town's, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health Emergency Order Regarding Grocery Retail.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Ms. Gardner.
Aye.
Mr. Trotter.
Aye. Unanimous.
Good. Thank you. All right. I think we're down to consent items.
Can I ask that this be continued to next week? We didn't get, we finalized these.
The minutes weren't in our packet today.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. All right. So is there anything else to come before the board?
Yeah, just a, two small points. John, is, is there any effort from, from Selby's office to assist, to assist small business owners in working their way through the, the applications for, for PPP funding? It was a, a second slug that the, the Congress approved, you know, last week. And, you know, what I've heard is that they just don't. It, it, it's a complex form. You need help. And, you know, the people that have accountants and lawyers, you know, can figure it out easily and have existing relationships with banks. You know, the small businesses that really could use this money, you know, are having problems getting it in the first part because they just don't know how to make the application.
Yeah, so we, Selby has been in touch and some of our other staff have been in touch with some of our small businesses and offering assistance. In, in some cases, it wasn't whether they did it right or wrong. It's just that the money wasn't there. But we're encouraging people to apply. And it looks like we need to get somebody out of the room here. Matt, can you take care of that?
I, I can get rid of him.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry. Yes, we, we are working with our businesses. If any of them are watching, I encourage them to reach out to us to ask any questions. We do also have contacts in our federal offices that we can point them to for additional assistance.
Peter?
I, I think there's, I've been reading about these, you know, spam that comes through Zoom. I thought there was some kind of control or something that you could prevent that. But anyway, I'm sure.
We're preventing him from speaking, which.
We started our discussion about helping out the small businesses. I think we should keep that on the agenda. There were some big numbers there. And we need to look at that in terms of how the town's going to fare going forward in terms of finances. We did get some comments this week that it may be unfair to just consider restaurants who have, you know, liquor licenses for relief, that we ought to make it broader. And so I think we ought to continue that discussion absolutely on our future agendas. There were a couple of things on there I had questions about. One was giving abatements to property owners. I'm not sure that we can just do that. I mean, state law sets, you know, criteria for abatements on property taxes. So we'd have to look into that legally. And there was other questions I had about moving the due date for real estate taxes. The statute allows that for personal property taxes too. I don't know if that was included in our vote or not. Certainly businesses pay the personal property tax. I don't know how much it is or whatever. But if it, if it wasn't included in our original vote, we should probably consider that as well.
Just, just on that, we, you know, the, the discussion last week was about the 13 or so establishments that have liquor licenses and, and the cost impacts of waiving apart or all of that. We've done some analysis on that, which we're looking to share with you soon and also with the finance committee in, uh, next week when they meet. But basically, we bring in just over 100,000 from those fees. So it's almost 2% of our, almost 6% of our permitting and licensing fee is, is from that source. So and with those, that's analysis that we're just starting and we're hoping to finalize and get in good shape to present to you going forward. But some of the ideas are easier to justify and, and explain than others.
Okay, anything else? David?
I was just wondering if we have a date for the next ALG meeting to go along with these financial decisions?
I, I was, I was asked to set one up and I haven't done that yet. But I, I'm shooting for mid-May.
Yeah, just from my point of view, before we take actions, I'd like to have a documented need. You know, in, in terms of, you know, you know, this is going down the road that Peter was starting to go down as property tax abatement or something like that.
Just, just one comment on that. I, I had sent out in the report that I've been, the updates I sent to all boards and committees, and I've extended that to some other people. And I included Selby's, you know, proposals. And on the, on the, you know, the property tax abatement, you know, that, the, I got about 25 or 30 responses. And most of them is you, you can't pick and choose unless you, you know, do something across the board. You, you know, you really can't favor, you know, one group, you know, over another group. The argument was made, everybody could use it to, to some degree. And I think Peter pointed out, there's an abatement process and you have to really go through that.
Well, I, I think there are things we could do, but we needed on an agenda item to discuss it, really. Right?
Okay, okay.
You know, I, I'm not in favor of that in particular. So I wasn't, I wasn't voicing that as a, something in favor. I, I just would, I was asking about the ALG because I would like to start there before we take actions. If any.
All right. Any other discussion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mr. Berry.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Ms. Gardner.
Aye.
Mr. Trotter.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you. See you all.
Remember, we'll be the next, next Monday night.
Right.
Go back to Monday for next week.
We're going to anticipate, okay, we're not going to meet Tuesday then? We're going to have the whole agenda on Monday. Okay.
We, we have the, the, the joint meeting and then we'll go into our meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.